As customary, we always have a word of prayer before we start our meeting and I've asked Commissioner Bennett if he would lead us in his prayer.
Heavenly thought will come for you tonight in humility and faith, Lord, and Lord, we just thank you for being here, Lord, and we thank you for the blessings you bring into our lives each and every day, Lord. Lord, it's just over these past month, we have lost so many dear friends and family in Hart County and I know I prayed first of the year that we would have a better year of 2025 without all the losses and here we are now with two or three more losses here. It's close to all of us here in Hart County, Lord, and Lord, just please be with us, help us and lead us and guide us, Lord, and let us live in your spirit and take our hand, Lord, and help us, Lord, and Lord, we just thank you for all the people, the people of Hart County, the people of this country, all of the leaders of this country, Lord, and we just pray that you'll take their hand and help us to have a better nation and a better place to live, Lord Jesus. Lord, just be with us here tonight as we go through the county's business, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Let's all stand for our pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is to elect officers for 2025 and that will include the chairman, vice chairman, and plus the IBA alternate. So I'll open the floor with nominations for chairman at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Marshall Sayer as chairman of Board of Commissioners for 2025.
I'll give you a second.
Okay, we got a motion, second.
We need to call the order first.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Jumping to doing things.
Yeah, I was just, okay, we've called this meeting to order Tuesday, January the 14th, 2025. Now we'll start all over with our nominations for chairman.
I'll nominate Marshall Sayer as chairman, Board of Commissioners for 2025.
I'll give you a second.
All right, we got a motion, second. We'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's three, any opposed? None opposed. All right, now we'll go to vice chairman. How about a nomination for vice chairman?
I'd like to nominate Joey Dorsey.
All right.
Give you a second.
Okay, we got a motion, second. We'll call for a vote, all in favor. All right. That's a four oh vote with abstention, Mr. Dorsey. Okay, and the vice chairman, everybody's in agreement, also includes the IBA alternate. That's understood, right?
Yeah, it's part of the legislation now.
Okay.
It was changed.
All right. Thank you all for allowing me to be chairman again and I appreciate it. I am not perfect, but I do commit a lot of time and energy into that office and I don't take it lightly. Mr. Dorsey, you have anything?
Same, similar situation.
All right, now, I'd like to welcome each of you here, whether you're here by in person or watching on YouTube channel or HTC Channel 3, I'd like to welcome each one here. Now to approve the agenda.
I have some, a couple of additions that I left off Friday. One is to add SP White Road, the second reading of the moat through trucks, they can go under old business under H. And the other is bid opening for the tennis court lighting. At the meeting last month, we had one bid, all instructions are running for 30 more days, which we did, we still haven't received any other bids, so they can go under eye of old business. And one other thing, under remarks by invited guests and committees and authorities, the IBA, there's come up a new wrinkle in the procedure, we go for the loan money, it's got to have a named committee, so they'll cover that. And with that, that's it.
All right, would you want to put that under?
We, they can bring them in up under invited guests if you want to, since it's the IBA itself.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda for those amendments.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. There was one discrepancy.
Under chairman's report, the classification.
Boom. Number nine, was it?
Ten.
Ten, there you go. We don't have a road, just not having agreement with the city, as far as road maintenance.
Should be road maintenance.
Yeah, should be road maintenance added for that.
That needs to be added.
Okay, any other corrections or additions? If not, you're going to get a motion to approve minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve with that amendment.
Second. We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley, all in favor, it's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on to remarks by invited guests, committees, and authorities, and I think this is for our IBA director.
Thank you. Mainly, we just wanted to come and give you an update as to, update we were recently made aware of. So as you guys know, the county administers a revolving loan fund set through DCA. And in the past, the review committee for that has typically just been the IBA board. And we recently got some updates that DCA was requiring a little bit of additional verbiage for a loan review committee and had some specifications that they were looking for in that committee. So we've got six people who have agreed to serve as that revolving loan fund committee, knowing that the Board of Commissioners ultimately has the final decision to approve or deny any of those requests. But currently, would you like a list of those names or you want the whole list of the names? So we have a willing to serve on that, we have Doug Cleveland, they look for a strong background in banking and finance, accounting and a legal experience. So we've got Doug Cleveland, Bill Leard, who's the current chair of the IBA, Kevin McCraney, who sits on the IBA board, Marshall has been willing to serve as our VOC chair, then we have Lisa Evans from the county, and then, yeah. Any questions?
Anybody?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got a vote on it. Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve these individuals to serve on the committee as requested by the IBA director.
Give me a second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown, any questions or concerns? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote, thank you. All right, next we'll have reports by Constitutional Office Department, here's, okay, thank you. Now we have County Administrator's report.
I'll go over the December financials. Month of December, total revenue was $2,864,228. Expenses was $1,342,146. That left deposit bearing for month 15, $1,522,182. And we got a reserve now in the front of $367,9398. Profit tax is coming in, coming in $1,399,322. Loss came in at $497,276. EMS fee was at $115,170 and vehicle tag fee was $136,325. Overall, the year was about 4% ahead on revenue coming in, about 4% under budget on expenses. Glad to answer any questions you got.
All right, what's, what drove December's LOST? That's way above and beyond anything we've ever seen.
I went back and checked it, but I just kind of glanced at a couple of folks around the state and it was all high. I don't know whether that's picking up the Christmas shopping starting in October, because those will be October numbers actually. So I don't have an answer to that, but everybody across, the way I pulled up across the state seemed to be up.
That's almost a hundred thousand dollars higher than anything we've seen in the past.
Yeah. I think it's people spending money clearing out their accounts at the end of the year for stuff.
See, mine was cleared out before the end of the year.
That's all I have, y'all have no question.
I hear Frankie tell lies.
I'm building a fence, man.
Thank you, Chair, for that report. As far as chairman's report, we have lost a few significant people out of Hart County since we last met. And Mr. Bill Holland, who was clerk of court for several years, our condolences go out to that family, who served this county well and done a terrific job as the clerk of court. And then we had Mr. Joel Moore that passed away. And he was, he was a former county commissioner. And you always knew where he stood, I mean, even, you know, here recently, well, about six months, maybe a year ago, he came down to my place of business and gave me his opinion on what, way things should be. And I always appreciated him and I thought he well decorated, served, served in the military and so he will be missed. And then Ms. Margaret Frye, she, she was well known in the community and, you know, her husband was a deputy for the, for the county for several years and, and now her grandson works for the sheriff department here in Hart County. So all these people played significant parts here in the county and our thoughts and prayers go out to these families. Also, I'd like to thank all of our first responders during the snow and the maintenance shop for getting the vehicles ready to be a factor in this emergency situation for our county. Firemen, road department, sheriff department, EMS, you know, you might say, well, this is their job, you know, but these are things beyond their job and they're, and I've never heard none of our county employees complain about going out and doing what's before, taking on a challenge and taking on the task that's before. I'm real appreciative, I'm thankful for the employees we have here in Hart County and all the way from administrative to the ones that work in the transfer station, the satellite centers, it takes all of us in this community to work together to provide services for the people of Hart County. So I just want to tell them, thank you for putting in the extra effort and extra time into what they accomplished during this weather storm. So that's all I have, we'll move on down to District 1, Commissioner Bennett.
My district's running pretty smooth, but as Chairman Sayer said, there's not a whole lot I can add to it. Hart County just functions like a well greased wheel, with the people that's in it, they make it happen. You know, like I said, all of the deaths, there was one other, our tax commissioner, Karen Martin, lost her mother over the holidays, there was many, we're just mentioning the people that, that we know here, but as I said in my prayer, there's so many people that I knew, it's just unreal. And I just pray that this year that that'll change for Hart County, that we don't lose so many. I know it's life, we're gonna, we're gonna live and die and pay taxes, you know, we're gonna do that, but it's hard for all of us when it touches home especially, so. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
District 2, Commissioner Teasley.
I want to add, K, too, like what Commissioner Sayer and Commissioner Bennett said about Ms. Margaret, Karen Martin's mother, and Bill Holland and Joel Moore. I mean, Bill Holland had a deer hunting club together, we'd had that thing for about 40-some years, we were like the first ones, you know, to have that land, we've had it a long time and Bill was like one of the original ones that, that started it up and he always hunted with like Hugh Kirby, I know Harry Sambs and some of them guys, and I know they'll miss him because old Bill was as good as they come. And Joel Moore, I attended that funeral and whenever I was the warden at the prison out there, had the, he was on the Board of Commissioners there at that time and I remember us having some meetings out there with the Commissioners and state representatives and stuff like that. And old Marshall hit the nail on the head when he said he'd always speak what he thought and he did and that's how he was and he was a good fellow and he'll be missed in our community as well. And I appreciate we got the sheriff back there, him and his assistant back there, Joseph Paley, I appreciate what them guys do and talk to them every now and then at the jail and stuff like that and appreciate what all them employees do and our road department and public safety, appreciate everything everybody does. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I would like to express my condolences also for Ms. Martin, that she was a fine lady, her, Billy, her husband, and that's just a fine, fine family there and my condolences go out to them also. Commissioner Brown, District 4.
Yeah, condolences for the families that, that lost loved ones since the last time that we met. You guys all did a phenomenal job of talking about each one of those individuals and what they meant to the county. Also, just to reiterate, thank you to those county employees who during everyone else's snow in and day off, it was their day on and they made sure that everyone was kept safe and kept out of harm's way and appreciate their sacrifice and hard work. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move on to District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
I'm, I'm gonna echo those same sentiments, I'm not gonna reiterate everything, but for those who did lose loved ones, you know, definitely thoughts and prayers go out to those families and to those who got out and worked to keep everybody safe during the snowstorm and all the pre-planning, I mean, Terrell spearheads that and does a phenomenal job and doesn't always get the credit he deserves, but he does a phenomenal job keeping everybody in the loop and getting everything lined up, Ed at the maintenance shop, it's just, just, everything comes together and that's what planning and being prepared will do. But definitely keep those families that have lost loved ones in their thoughts and prayers. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to old business, 12A request to purchase excavator, rave department, this is the same one we discussed back in November or so.
Sent back to verify the warranty and everything. Warranty is the same as a new factory, warranty, unfortunately the hours started zero on it, so.
Well, do appreciate you checking on that, that way, you know, I know it came up last meeting, but we did want to make sure that we were doing the best financially, appreciate you checking on that.
So he does, that's the way that you deal with warranty run.
So we need to just keep leasing it, it's our best bet. Our best bet is just keep leasing it, whenever you buy it, that's when your warranty starts.
And the warranty start. The hour starts at zero, as far as when the warranty runs out on your hour, so.
But what you said here, the time begins at the sale, hours at zero when we.
Yeah, that's basically it, I mean, if there's until.
What do we pay for the lease?
Twenty seven, thirteen a month.
Twenty five, was twenty five hundred?
Twenty nine, thirteen a month.
About three thousand, almost.
Either way, that warranty start has already started.
That's right. An hour zero started leasing.
Well, are they gonna continue to let the lease pass now?
That was offered, offered for just a certain time.
In two and a half years, you will pay, you will have paid that machine in two and a half years.
I make a motion, go ahead and purchase the machine, they've already used it and it's working out, it's doing what they asked it to do and the warranty was really the only thing in question we've ever clarified, right?
That's right.
I'll give you a second.
We got a motion, second by Commissioner Bennett, any other discussion or questions?
Is this gonna be a road splosh?
Some of us flush, flush five.
Okay, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on down to Board Authority advertise for 2025.
We do this every January, we go ahead and get approved, get approval to go ahead and advertise for all the seats that's gonna be coming open on all the boards this coming year.
Give you a motion to advertise the four positions.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley, any questions or discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. All right, now we'll move on down to setting preliminary construction budget for transfer station building.
Yes, I've got the preliminary drawings and design on the building, it's transfer station, I'll bring them up, let y'all look at them, if you can, you can look at them, I don't know if I've seen them all yet, I don't know. I don't know why I'm gonna be able to make them big enough, y'all already tell what's going on. This is just one of the basic designs.
Would the other buildings out there still be repaired and used too?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll be down here with the show you the complete layout. Who drew this, Terrell?
Precision planner.
Oh, precision planner.
So do we already have to pay them to do this or?
Yeah, we paid them the initial.
This is already paid, the engineering, didn't we already pay for that?
We paid them to get a bid, get the package ready and get all the file design done and that kind of stuff. Now they'll have to do a lot more work to get to be a document.
What, and it's about a hundred thousand for this or something?
Yeah, that's for both of them.
I'm not sure what we got here.
No, no, seventeen thousand. That's, that's the kind of layout right there. That's the existing building where recycling goes on it, this is the existing building where they're pushing the trash in, this is the new building over here. And there'll be a lot of work done up from here that we don't have now that we're gonna have to put in to get stuff, water coming off all this, because right now, we've got this, we'd be small, retention pond down there is not gonna hold all this sort of pregnant stuff. But anyway, these buildings are designed with this, once this is done and in operation, this operates and the other one will be repaired at that time, but until that time, we've got double interest in both of them where the traffic won't ever stop. We ain't got to shut it down for anything unless it's just a minor hour to do something, this is the only way we could figure, keep the old in operation while we were doing the new one. So it's, that's, that's, this is the only thing we had here, a lot of this great, this is the main building we had, which is pretty much identical, same size, just something, it's designed different, designed a lot stouter and there's no metal on the walls, it's all concrete.
Concrete all the way top?
Yeah, there'd be metal on top that eight foot concrete.
Yeah, okay, that's about it.
And like the other building, Terrell, that we use in over there, will it, like the repairs on it, would it be, have the eight foot concrete in there or will it just be, the metal be fixed on?
We just wanna look at and see what we got to start with, but right now you don't have concrete, solid concrete walls, now you got concrete blocks.
Yeah, sorry it broke out.
You had concrete blocks.
Yeah, you had.
You had concrete blocks.
It's gone now.
Yeah, they used to be concrete blocks, this is all reinforced concrete here, there's no blocks anywhere. And that's the reason the budget is fairly steep too, the budget, project your budget on this, it's about 2.28, and that does include the hundred thousand dollars coming in next in the design, construction, drawing, all that stuff.
How much dirt you gonna have to get, Terrell, to fill in that, that area?
We don't have to get any dirt, that's gonna be the other down.
I'm talking on the back side.
The back side?
Yeah, and right here on the side, just eight hundred foot, yes.
All that's already pretty steep, that's the natural, that's the natural fall in right there.
But some of the grade in out there and all, probably just gonna move dirt around.
I'm gonna move dirt around.
But you, you're not gonna fill in this section in between these two?
In here.
I mean, you got the road, yeah, but you got to have your road for back both buildings.
Yeah, and if you come.
But the roads gonna have to be higher than.
Right, and this is, this is, what you see on the, on the drawings here, the, that's, that's, that's the grade as it is now.
It's got the topo on it.
So we're hoping we're not gonna need any dirt, we just gonna be moving dirt around. This is what the, what the hopes are and the best they can calculate right now, they're even gonna be there. But again, this one will be about a foot higher than this one is, just because if the water turn like about eight to turn.
Turn that water under.
Again, this has got the same floor, I mean, the same kind of floor with this building.
The rails.
It's got this steel rail and all that, where the concrete went where out. So, I mean, a lot of this, all this here's gotta be changed around, so you're gonna, you're gonna pick up some dirt out of this here, you're gonna pick up dirt out of here. So we're hoping we're not gonna need to bring in much if any dirt.
Have we, have we solicited any other proposed designs other than this one or is this the only?
Only one you can do right there.
Do what now?
You're limited, very limited on what you can do right there.
I'm just saying, as far, this is the only proposed design that we've had.
Yep.
As far as, um, submitted.
But we, are we going to solicit any, any other ones, or?
That's up to y'all. I wouldn't, but that's up to y'all.
Well, this is, this has all the specs, right?
Yeah.
There, uh, I mean, I'm just throwing this out here, but we have very qualified industrial contractors in this county. I don't know if we need to get them.
No, this is not, this is not one out for contractors. This is the architect and engineer side.
I understand it.
We'll send it out to be for bill.
But where'd this two point two million come from?
That's the, you gotta have a budget strong.
Well, okay.
It's a temporary budget.
I understand, I think we need to keep that in mind.
I got, I got estimate on, on, on the cost, and we tried to figure the estimate higher than the actual cost, but basically we have no money to budget to do it.
Well, I know if we do it in a house, we're saving enough money to refurbish the other building, no doubt.
See how you gonna say, we gonna say money?
With the cost of it.
Uh, no, I'm talking, you might pay somebody to do it either way we go.
It's not but, there's not but four contracts up here. I'm looking at, that's excavation, concrete, the steel building, and a little bit of electrical that goes in. That pretty much it is.
Very little.
It's very little, just lights, all this. If we can't manage four contractors, we need to change jobs or something, I guess.
I, I may be the, um, lone wolf here, but I just wanna throw out that personally, I would like to see us put off to at least next meeting, just to make sure, I mean, see if we could maybe get some, uh, I mean, Precision's done a great job, and if this was, let's say, uh, courthouse or administrative building, um, you know, you gotta have someone with some good expertise, but with something, uh, fairly simple like this, uh, I think that we may be able to at least have the conversation and look in at some other options. And if there's not, and this is the best way to go, sure, but I would just make sure that we, you know, don't leave any stone unturned for the taxpayers, and then that way we can rest easy, knowing, hey, if this is what it's gonna cost, what it's gonna cost, but we're only talking about two more weeks, um, just to give it some more. I know, I know this has been an idea thrown out for a while, but, um, you know, we're, we're essentially talking about.
Well, that's basically what I'm saying, Commissioner Brown, because we got contractors here just building two million dollar houses. This is a simple project. I mean, I'm looking out for the taxpayers.
But you don't want to, you, you don't want to do something, cut some corners, cut some costs, and then cause more issues down the road. I get that.
You're not gonna know what your true costs are till it goes out for bid. I mean, you got a budgeted number that is probably a guess, if nothing else.
It's just an educated guess on that.
Right. And you're not gonna know what your materials and all that stuff is until it's put out.
I get that. I'm just having to keep back. I might as well have people right here in town.
You should be able to get pretty darn close with materials. I mean, somebody should be able to get, get down to almost the, the, the nuts and bolts there and price it out. Um, that's all I'm asking. I don't have, I don't have all the answers, but I know there's very capable, intelligent folks that make up this county, and, um, um, I think that we should.
We're not kicking, we're not kicking the contractor. We, we're just setting a budget.
Okay. That, well, that's kinda what I took is, you know, with these next couple pages.
It'll have a whole bid package.
I mean, you go to the next page, and we are taking a planning group, six-figure contract.
Which is a lot more.
That's all I'm, you know, I don't want us to.
A lot more specifications you gotta be.
And a hundred thousand dollar cost, what I read.
I mean, if all we're doing on, on this item of 12C is just strictly itemizing a budget item, then sure, we know that we're gonna have to pay for this.
No budget, do anything.
Yeah.
One, one of the costs driving this, guys, is you gotta have a professional engineer to sign off on this design.
That's right. Well, I was one of the ones that said that from the get-go, when we were talking about this a year ago, is that we need someone professional, um, who is an engineer to look at this and not just what we've got in the past, what we've got, you know, whomever to come out there ten, fifteen years later, we fix some problem.
This engineer has looked at this. This engineer has looked at this and approved.
This is the same engineer that did the jail, right?
Same engineer that done the jail, done the sheriff's office.
Yeah, but we're not building the jail here. We're building the transfer station.
We want it to be right when it's built, don't we?
That's right. If we were to take it up as engineer, not gonna sign off on it.
Don't wanna spend money just for the sake of spending money either. All I'm saying, guys, is just, you give it two more weeks.
Well, I mean, there's no, no absolute goddamn bid.
Make sure you're doing it, doing it right. But as far as the budget, yeah, you, you gotta set a budget. I just didn't want us to be signing, signing checks.
This one's coming out of the fund out of reserve, and we'll need to set that aside before we can spend it. It's, it's all on paper until you write the check.
And it is what it is. We're setting a benchmark. Probably gonna have to change it anyways. If it comes back in this two point four, you're gonna have to make a budget amendment.
So what are you, what are you wanting to accomplish by putting it off two weeks? I'm just asking.
What do you mean?
Or you, you wanting to wait two more weeks? What are you wanting to accomplish?
As far as us going ahead with a contractor? We need to make sure.
No, 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 we, we're not going with a contractor.
I was just looking at the budget.
That's why I was pumping the brakes, because it seemed like y'all was ready to get it going. I'm like, hold on a second.
You good with the budget.
I was good with the budget item last year. I said, we need to start working on a budget for the transfer station.
What, what Precision, Precision will do next is create a bid package.
Well, we got a lot of things going in line here.
Material list, all, everything in. That's what the big money is for.
That's, yes.
And the O R C.
Are we gonna get an engineer signed off on that bid packet?
They're doing it for you.
That's who's done it.
It's covered engineer and everything.
Okay. And I know we got people that we have to have engineers.
I'm gonna make the motion, we move forward with this. We got the work done. We need to go on and get started.
Hmm.
The building out there's falling apart. Sides are gone. Sides are falling out. It's, we gotta get something going here. I mean, your design.
Oh, hell no. I'm not checked two or three times a week.
I am too.
Your, your design is complete. It's been done by a professional engineering firm, which we're required to do by law, and let's move forward with it.
Motion approved, preliminary construction budget.
Yeah. I'll give you a second to approve preliminary budget.
You got a motion by Mr. Dorsey.
It died.
I second, okay.
Joe made a motion to be second.
Joe made a motion to hire a contractor and start work.
Going to move forward with the process.
Oh, with process. You talking, you talking about developing the bid packet?
Well, he was saying move forward.
I'm talking about developing the bid package.
You, you said a motion to approve preliminary budget. He, he made a motion to move forward with the project.
My motion is to move forward with the construction budget and to go ahead and get the bidding process started. That's what I, my motion is.
All right, uh, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion by, uh, Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley, and basically what we're saying at this point, if I understand, that we're gonna go ahead and get the engineering drawings and be put out for a bid, and.
And once, once we get the bid packet back, y'all gotta approve.
We got a chance to review it.
Right.
Before it goes out.
Y'all, y'all review it and approve it.
We can stop it if it's.
We can make changes to it. If it's something, we got questions. We got an opportunity to ask those questions at that time.
Right.
And I'll be glad to have the, the engineer.
Engineers here to answer your questions.
Okay. So basically, you're setting up to go ahead and approve 12D.
Yes.
With the engineering plan.
Yes.
Basically, yeah, that's what the motion.
That's what I'm saying. You, you bringing things together.
All right, any other discussion or questions? All right, uh, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? We had four. Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Brown opposed. Uh, we'll go on to, uh, county juvenile prosecutor contract. Ms. Kim, I think we.
Yes, sir. Y'all had already approved this expenditure. This is just for contracting people. I didn't see anything wrong with it. I didn't look. Y'all had any questions. And I don't think every county is on board yet, but we are. We're gonna get our services taken care of. It's greatly appreciated.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion?
I had a question. Uh, of course, I read through all that. Is hourly rates, or is that what we're agreeing to, that I'm seeing in here, by prosecutors and, uh, private practice attorneys as well?
No, no, that was a different memo, different subject.
I sent, I sent that one to you. That was, that's not in this.
That's what we do then.
So what set price did we agree to then?
Yeah, this is ten thousand for the whole year, for our portion of what he does.
Paid monthly.
Paid monthly within ten days.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that up.
Uh, yeah, this one is three A.
Okay, Commissioner Dorsey made the, uh, motion. Who made the, uh, Commissioner Teasley made to say any other questions? All right, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's a five oh vote. All right, uh, solar moratorium extension. I know we've had a lot going on. We've not been able to get back to the solar, uh, farm ordinance, but, uh, the time has run out on the moratorium say, uh.
Was this a hun, was a hundred and eighty day, was it? I don't remember.
I think it was ninety day.
I think it was, yeah, I thought it was ninety.
That was ninety day.
We extended it.
No, I.
Originally, I think it was a hundred and eighty day, then we extended it nine.
Hundred and eighty day extension.
Yeah.
I make a motion to extend it, the solar moratorium extension to, we might as well do a hundred and eighty days. We don't have time or call it to do it there.
My second.
Motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Dorsey. Uh, any discussion? Questions? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's a five oh vote. Uh, move on to transfer station hours of operation and scale closings.
Like I say, over the last couple weeks, um, I've been getting some stuff, and we're trying to just clarify for the staff and, and, and the public. Uh, we're supposed to close an hour for the transfer station. We gotta close that scale ten, fifteen minutes ahead of time to keep everybody off of, to get zeroed out, do all the backups, get the message, let the people that's already in there get unload.
I agree.
And get it cleaned up.
They turned me way out there before fifteen minutes.
But again, I want y'all to set the policy, and I'll post a signage, whatever the policy is.
If we advertise the hours of the two o'clock, the gate should be open to two o'clock. I mean, it is what it is. That's your hours of operation. You shut the gate then. They're shutting the gate at fifteen minutes till. This has not been a problem up until these new people are out there and they've started doing this. Um, it's compounded by the fact that you don't have trailers. Um, I was out there this past Saturday, or Saturday before last, can't remember. The line was backed up almost to the, with a dog thing, was. You had three, these waste pro trucks are coming in out there on Saturdays. That's, that's creating more problems. You had three waste pro trucks that came in back to back to back, the big commercial trucks. Place was already slapped full, had nowhere to push anything.
What time did they get there? I mean, how close was it to closing time when they get?
Probably one thirty, one thirty-five.
Well, I mean, we gets backed up, and we ain't got nowhere to put nothing else. That's the problem.
Yeah.
And that's what's happening. And again, well, you take, I talked to Greg today this morning. I think they done two hundred and seventy tons yesterday.
Gosh, that's a bunch.
Uh, and, uh, waste management is give us another truck. We had three trucks. Maybe he gives another truck. They keep drivers, which will give us another, should give us another truck or two more trailers. Is that gonna handle it?
No.
No.
It ain't gonna make it.
At, at rush time, it's not.
Is the line continuous all day Saturday?
It comes and goes.
They, they get bombarded from the time they open up until they can finally get out of it.
It seems like what we're talking about here is the end of the day, people getting cut off.
It's backing up.
Uh, so is it, that's what I'm wondering. Is it at eleven AM? Is it the same exact line?
Right. Well, the seat, nothing on Saturdays. I think the bench kind of dunk closes at twelve, I think.
Okay.
So.
So the line's not as long at eleven AM versus two?
No, I'd have to go out there and say, no, but it's, it's busy.
Do we have to pay overtime for them employees that work overtime?
Unless we change their schedule around, yes.
You could, they could take comp time, or you could, you pay them.
You said yes.
If we don't change, if they work, they're scheduled for forty hours a week, just like they really.
So here we are, we're gonna pay overtime to accommodate.
We could, we could change them around. They work staggered shifts or something, or they maybe can keep.
Why can we not put a sign out there saying last truck in one thirty, and give these people a half hour to get their mess in order? I mean, you got to have time to get ready for the next day.
Because if they don't, then I get complaints.
Saturday, if you got there at one thirty, it was two thirty when you left.
Well, if you put a sign up out there, I mean, if people can't read, then they just need to come.
You're trying to fix multiple problems. You got multiple issues. The first thing that's got to be fixed is the trailer issue, being able to get the stuff pushed out of the way. That's the first issue. That's driving a lot of this. The second issue is if you advertise you're open till two o'clock, to me, that means your gates are open till two o'clock. You go closing at two o'clock. Um, it's a matter of processing things through. Uh, I really feel like with the amount of stuff that's going on, those hours need to be extended now, because there's days of the week when they close at fourth, what, four fifteen, four thirty, they start shutting down out there. People that work to five, they don't get a chance to go out there, except on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, it's open to seven.
I've never known.
Don't we have issue getting trash from the station to commerce?
Yeah. That's, that's the, that's the big issue.
So you're gonna open it for longer, cause a bigger mess, and cause more hours.
Oh, yeah. On Saturdays, especially since the, since the main place they take it to is shut down at twelve o'clock on Saturday. I mean, I don't know, I don't know the national Saturdays.
Worst thing that you do is open for longer, cause a bigger event.
The thing of it is, thing of it is, I mean, how can the person working on Saturday make a plan Saturday afternoon when he don't know when he's gonna get off work, because twenty trucks gonna pile in there at one forty-five?
If you shut the gate at two o'clock, you gonna know that's when it's gonna, what's in there.
And you got fifteen trucks setting ready to weigh in.
I can't help that.
Were you responsible for those employees?
I understand. I understand.
I understand. We set rules for them.
I understand. We set the hours.
Exactly.
But we haven't told them to go out there and start shutting the gates at fifteen minutes till, and they doing that.
If you go down Walmart and sign says closed, and you turn around and go home and say, I missed them, now they'll do the same thing to Atlanta.
Yeah, but if you in there, they let you go on and check out. They tell you you're leaving, and you, you can't speed the process up.
Well.
I mean, it's just like this weekend. I got complaints this weekend because the convenience centers weren't open. I called Terrell.
Called me, and I called Greg, and, and my exact instruction was check for ice. If there's any ice on that stuff, I don't want to open it. Well, evidently didn't check Sunday morning, because there shouldn't have been no ice Sunday morning. Saturday, Saturday was a given. We knew that it was gonna be ice, but they supposed to check Sunday morning to be sure. There wasn't any, if there wasn't any, they supposed to open it. And we opened it up till two or three, sometime. So they've been, been afternoon, it shouldn't have been no ice. So, uh, he said he didn't understand me, but that's where it went, because I called him after Joe called me.
Well, you just need to be fair to the employees.
Well, it sounds like the employees are under the assumption that their.
They're supposed to be through and gone by two o'clock.
So how do you expect?
That's, that's their assumption. That will.
Well, how do you expect them to, if, if, in their job description, it says you, you work from eight to two, but you gave them a job that, you know, good and well that can't be done at two. That's, I mean, if they're gonna do their job, then they're gonna be getting done at two thirty at best, if you're gonna leave that gate open.
And you'll be paying them.
If they don't clean up.
Exactly.
Not necessarily. You, you could give comp time. I mean, that's.
It's gonna cost us more money to, to, to keep them.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if once the word gets out that that, those gates stay open till two o'clock, you'll see a line.
Those gates have been staying open to two o'clock, except for two, except for two Saturdays that I'm aware of. Those gates have been open to two o'clock.
And if you open.
Two Saturdays. Two Saturdays.
But once people hear this, over two o'clock, they're gonna line up out there and come in at five minutes to two.
They're lining up because they can't get the trash pushed through.
And if you open it to three o'clock, they'll be the same problem. If you open it to four o'clock, they'll be the same problem.
What I'm saying is-
If you open it to ten o'clock at night, they'll be the same problem. So, open it for an extra thirty minutes, an hour is not gonna solve your problem here if people are being upset.
Alright, so let me ask you this.
All you're doing is keeping a father from going to a party with a kid or something.
You gotta be fair, you gotta be consistent. If you're gonna say that these, the transfer station's gonna shut down at two o'clock, you're gonna shut down the courthouse at five o'clock and you're gonna run everybody out.
If five minutes five, you go in that courthouse and you won't get nobody to help you, I can tell you that.
I disagree with that.
I've been there many times, it's like five minutes five, they won't even answer the phone at five minutes.
I, I think there's some possible issues.
Well, it's just a judge, ain't it, when you gonna run courthouse hours?
I mean, it's just-
Yeah, I mean, I don't argue whether they're hours, but I've called at five to five and they don't answer the phone, none of them do.
I'm just saying, if we advertise, if we advertise it's gonna be open to two o'clock, the gates should be open to two.
You've gotta give people time to prepare for the next day.
Why don't we change it to one thirty?
That's fine with me.
Then you shut up, you shut it at one o'clock.
No.
No.
Shut it down at one thirty.
When are you gonna shut the gates? We're talking about when we're gonna shut the gates?
One thirty?
Shut the gates at one thirty, give them time to clean up and get everything caught up and go home at two o'clock.
That's right, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I've been saying the whole time.
The phones are fixing to ring, fellas.
And if there's a pile of trash in there, you won't be adding to it till two o'clock. I'm just saying be fair to the employees, I had, had it mentioned to me that one particular employee had a birthday party going on at three o'clock and they had to stay to two twenty in.
So, so if these are full-time employees and you're gonna cut them back to one thirty?
No, you're gonna pay them two o'clock.
Shut the gate, but if it's, if it's still after two o'clock when they get out of there, what are you gonna do? You gonna pay them overtime or offer them comp time?
What are we doing now?
If they close that gate at one thirty, they'll be out there at two o'clock.
Not necessarily, they would not have been this past Saturday, Commissioner, you didn't listen to what I said. The, the line was backed up all the way to the dog kennels back there.
I've been there many times where it's backed up to across the road.
And it could not get nothing through, and if you go and look at the time cards, it's probably two thirty, two forty-five before they got out of there.
But if that sign's put up out there that the gates close at one thirty, if there's a legitimate sign, these people will read it.
That gate was closed at one forty-five, Commissioner.
But they will read it at one thirty, and they're put showing up.
At one forty-five, that gate was closed.
Alright, let's do this, let's-
I want to ask a question right here to Terry. What does, what does Greg recommend? What does Greg recommend?
Greg not recommend anything, he just-
I mean, he's the one that runs the show out there.
He said they from fifteen minutes, shut everything down.
Well, if we gave him thirty, then he oughta be fine.
Then he'd be fine.
Well, why can't we try this at one thirty? And then if it don't work out, we can come back and change something else. But at this point, we need to move on.
Make a motion one thirty?
One thirty.
Well, this is gate at one thirty, they continue.
Second. And if Greg's got a problem with it, tell him to come down here and tell us how to fix it.
That's right.
Well, it's not, it's not gonna be Greg that's got the problem with it.
Well, Greg's the department head down there, right?
It's gonna be your constituents who, or your customer here, who are gonna be denied time that they're being, that they've been paying for and have had opportunities in the past. The problem is this growth that this county has experienced, you've got multiple, and I've brought this up before, you've got many people that don't even live in Hart County coming here dumping trash.
I know it.
And this board has yet to address that, even though I brought it up. Until this is done, Hart County citizens are gonna continue to subsidize other, other citizens and other residents of other counties, trash disposal, it's time that we get that done. If we're gonna change these hours, we need to do this at the same time.
Yeah, I agree, we're gonna change the rate, everybody else around us do it, that's why we're getting a lot of stuff.
You're talking about the price? That's right, I'm glad y'all brought that up, because I brought that up last year and it got shot down. I said we need to change the price because everybody else is cheaper. I mean, we're cheaper than everybody else around us, that's why they're coming.
We're under contract.
Didn't we just do an increase?
We did, we're under contract.
On death ears.
The way, the way those folks do it, it's a contract and it's got a, a price index increase built into it, Jeff.
We can, we can set the price.
Let's settle with the hours right now, that's what we're discussing, and we'll look at the-
Waiting.
Rate later.
You got a motion to close at?
At one thirty.
One thirty, and they continue to work, get their job done, and till two o'clock. You say it, Mr. Bennett. Alright, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's four.
If that's includes the sign out there. We need a sign at the gate that says gates close at one thirty.
Yeah, now, on, on the other topic of the fees, everybody else is charging their local residents the normal fee. And anything that's not local coming in from another county, some of them is much doubled.
But you can't determine who's-
I just don't understand how you can prove that.
You can't.
Well, that ain't been found out for sure yet, but that's got, they're doing it, so there's got to be a way to do it.
We can look at the rate at a different time, we got the hour thing settled.
Yeah, we look at it, well, I'm just saying about, about the way everybody else is doing.
Okay. Alright. We'll move on to the, uh, H, the sign, uh, SBY, SBY.
Uh, that was me, I looked into that, uh, it definitely needs to be done. And there's just a lot of big trucks going up and down that road, I talked to three of the neighbors down there, only actually had one complaint and I decided I'd talk to some others. And it's, it's not, it's pretty heavy as far as truck traffic, but the biggest problem is they're speeding as well, so we'll have to deal with that a different way. But if nobody has a problem with it, I'll put it in a motion to have a first reading to put no through truck signs on SBY White Road.
I thought you had that had-
I think we had that first reading when you brought it up last time, I thought.
We just need a second reading.
It's the second reading.
Okay, motion for the second reading, second.
Got a motion back to Commissioner Bennett, second back to Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five oh vote.
And the next one is the bid for the Kansas port lighting that, that the first meeting last month.
Make a motion we open the bid tonight, that's what we said we would do with the last.
We, we run it thirty more days and we still got the one bid, so.
Need the vote on it. We need the vote on it.
Got a motion to, uh, open the bid, you got a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? It's five oh vote.
There you go.
Let's tear it up like Chris.
Excuse me. You got your, I can, I can, I can handle it, don't you?
Let's see. $59,000 by Musco Sports Lighting LLC. Let's see here, I'm gonna mispronounce this, Oskaloosa, Indiana. I'm sorry, Oskaloosa, Iowa.
Are you familiar with these people, Mr. Owens? You are? They've done work down there before?
For about forty years.
Got a motion to turn this back over to Rec Advisory Director.
Second.
Alright, I made a motion, second back to Commissioner Brown, all in favor? It's five oh vote. Alright, now we're gonna talk about, uh, new business, thirteen A Office of Highway Safety Grants Accepted, Sheriff Carroll's here with us tonight, he'll be telling us about this grant.
I think y'all pulled nerve, I can be up here for the first time.
You used to.
We wanna hear your speech.
Yeah, real quick, I just wanna thank y'all for what you do for public safety and just thank everybody for what they've done publicly for, in our transition, Terry included.
Well, we thank y'all for what y'all do.
It's, it's been busy and we're, we're still in the process of trying to get things moved out. We got approved for two different grants, the first one is a Criminal Justice Coordinated Council Grant, I guess you would consider both these kind of micro grants. This one's fifteen thousand dollars, and what we're looking to do with this is buy reflective vests, safety equipment, rain coats, rain pants, some traffic wands, some LED traffic markers for the roads on rec scenes, just mainly safety equipment. And it's a reimbursement grant, so we have to spend that money, then they give us the money back, but there's no match to that grant. So, that's, that's the first one, fifteen thousand. The second one we got approved for is through the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, is a grant for technology computers. About half of our cars right now have computers and that allows these deputies to, we got the software where they can, they got it on the map for safety reasons, they can run GCIC in the car, see who they're dealing with, and they can take that information from GCIC and transfer it over into incident reports and accident reports, and it, it just makes them more efficient and, and more accurate for what they do, instead of having to enter information multiple times. So, like I said, half of our cars, we got computers in, and we got approved for this grant, which is twenty-eight thousand and twenty-five dollars, and that should get us really close to finishing out the rest of our cars. The only thing this grant does not cover is the software, and we'll have to look at that at a later date, but this will cover the, the hardware for the, for the vehicles, including printers and, and all that, so. Like I said, both of these are reimbursement grants, we have to spend that money, then they pay us back with no match.
I'll make a motion, we'll approve this, approve the sheriff's request to do this.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion back to Commissioner Teasley, second back to Commissioner Brown. Any discussion, questions, or whatever? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's five oh vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
We need it for records, that'll come out of the multi-grant fund, we'll be paid back in a minute.
Okay. Alright, next is opioid fun, uh, funding request from Avita. If y'all remember, we did get some monies from the opioid, opioid from the lawsuits, and this money that they're wanting is the money that we received through those lawsuits. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, we, we got a good bit more than what they requested, and there are fifteen pages of what we can spend the money on, and suggestions. Most of these are programs that have cost way more than what we've received, so Avita's been our only request so far, and it does look like it hits on target. We wish it were just right here in Hart County, but it is a regional money expenditure that we're looking for, and one other county was already on board, is that right?
I do, do recall you quite a few times telling us you got a check received, money is due.
It's over two hundred thousand dollars.
That's why I was gonna ask.
Nothing to sneeze at, it doesn't run these programs that they have approved, so.
And we can't just use that money for anything.
Can't just use it for anything, it's in Hart, so.
And they're trained to revert in this area, and it would benefit them more than it would us trying to start a program.
Oh, I don't have a problem with it.
The only thing that I see up here that we might could utilize a little bit better is, uh, EMT training and, uh, maybe some sheriff's department training or. I mean, it, there was some approved drugs that reversed that, but I don't know whether or not that's something that we could buy to put on a-
There we go.
Narcan?
But how do we pay for it? Is it?
State version, I don't think. Right now, the state version.
So, we're limited in how we can use it, we've got funding creative way and use it, you know, combat the drug issue, but right now, we just, we don't have enough to do the big things, and this is a small thing.
There is a new law that takes place this year, we have to stop moving it before it goes.
Narcan?
You got a, what?
Just start Narcan and then it's supposed to go.
Oh.
We have to do it, but the state's not gonna do it.
We could, we could buy that.
One more thing, that's on the county's bag, but yeah, we could use that to do that, definitely.
Okay.
But today, it's just the Avita request, I think it was fifteen dollars.
Okay. Have a motion to, uh, award them fifteen thousand dollars out of opioid crisis, uh, funding.
Motion.
Got a motion back to Commissioner Brown?
Second.
Second back to Commissioner Bennett, all in favor? Okay, five oh vote. Right now, we're gonna, uh, move on to House Bill five eighty-one. First of all, if there's no opposition from the commissioners, I would like to, I've asked Mr. Shane Hicks, who's our chief tax praiser, if he would come down here on next Tuesday, the twenty-first, at six o'clock, and if anybody from the public wants to come and ask questions and wanna understand why we are doing what we're doing on this, he will be about, is there anybody that's opposed to that? I mean, he-
He should really be part of the public hearings.
He's gonna come back and do that too. I just wanna give people an opportunity to be able to come out and see how this is gonna affect, uh, the, the county taxes. Does anybody got a problem?
I don't have one.
I don't, no.
Alright, so we'll plan on that, and Terry, if you could put that in a newspaper, uh, this week, can that be done, to announce that, uh, we'll be having that at-
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, twenty-fourth, here in this building, and if he's got any presentations or whatever he wants to provide, we, you know, we'll show those, and if they got questions, that'll be a time that they can ask, plus the hearing times.
Correct.
And he'll, he's agreed to be here during the hearings too, so, uh, we appreciate Shane doing that for us, but anyway.
They all asked me a while back to run some numbers, and what I've got here is, is everything you see from the gap in the green line there up, all is, is from the Taxation Sessions Office, which are all actual numbers. What we done, we backed up, uh, for three years to see what the effect would be with the real numbers. And if you'll see here, the first year, to keep the same amount of revenue coming in, we'd have to increase the meditrate by a half a mil. And progressively gets worse. To get the same amount the next year, you'd have to increase it by, by, uh-
Break one.
Uh, one mil, and then one, one point two mil. So, the way this thing works is gonna keep riding, and again, we'd have to cut what gets spent, which is not the place to cut, we're gonna break the streak, we're gonna operate the meditrate. I mean, that's just the fact of the matter. So, and, and there's, there's a potential for a squash fund, tax could be fun, but that's up to the voters. If that fails, we're, we're gone, I mean, there's nothing, nothing else we can do with this thing. So, that's just, that's, that's looking at it from our view, if we spend. Shane can go a lot more in depth in it at the next meeting and explain.
And this is just on three here, right? That you're do-
This is just freezing, and that's using a three percent, uh-
Right, that they talked about.
And it increased, they're talking, they've never decided on what that is, or where it's gonna come from, so, there's just a whole lot of unknown for this thing, and this is the only, we act, we got, we got ninety days to act and have it completely done, so that's where we at.
March first, was it?
And they're already talking about amendments to this bill.
For amendments to change the round.
We don't know what that's about at this point either, so.
But what, what the citizens need to understand is this was, when it was put on the ballot, it was not clear at all what people were voting on. People look at this and see homestead exemption and sales tax, and they automatically think, this is what I need to vote, they didn't look at the nuts and bolts and the workings of this House bill. It's gonna be one that is gonna be very difficult, I think you're gonna see, I don't know of any school system around here that's not gonna opt out, I think you're gonna see a lot of local governments opting out too. And then you think, well, this is going against the will of the people. I think once the majority of the public understands what goes on with this bill, and it's explained, I think things, people's opinion will change. Um, there are some things that are still coming out, still getting clarification on. It's, it's not something that's, um, still cutting stone, and, uh, yeah, you could have a float ta, a floss tax, whatever it's called, a sales tax to roll back the millage rate, but that's gotta be split with the municipalities, uh, and sooner or later, that's not gonna cover the increases, so it's, it's flawed legislation to start with.
And to your point, Commissioner, they knew, they knew that the counties were gonna lose money, so that's why they gave that option.
That's right.
Of the floss tax because uh, you know, that would give us a way to recoup some of our, our money. It passed in Hart County fifty-six percent. And that's kinda, you know, halfway there that, you know, it's not a real big margin of people that wanted it over the ones that didn't, so.
Not for that type of ballot question.
No.
A ballot question of that, like kind, usually will pass well over seventy-five percent in Hart County. So it's fifty-six percent. Well, I don't think people looked at the ballot clearly, cause I think the bill is seven, seven pages, is it what I was saying?
Yeah.
You may have.
That wasn't, seven pages wasn't on the ballot though.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, uh, you know, but there's seven pages of understanding there and all they read was three lines. So that I don't know how the people could wanna vote for it, to be honest.
Honestly, anytime they ask for a change to the constitution, you know, they do something, they won't do something that's not legal now, so they got changed constitution makes it legal.
And, and another point too, to uh, I don't think people had the opportunity to find out about this bill before uh, before early voting had started. Because I know I for one, and I know some other other commissioners kept asking about this in, in the summer, you know, what's our, what's, what's going on with the House Bill five eighty-one? What's going on? You know, well, our lawyers have got it and they're trying to figure it out. And once we get a presentation together, we'll give it to y'all. Well, that presentation come out on a Wednesday after early voting had started on the Monday. So if we'd have had time to educate people, I, I don't know that we'd have had the fifty-six percent if they see the whole thing. So the, as Joey says, the nuts and bolts, they really weren't out there before voting time. So that's, that was another issue.
Still don't know.
No.
That's, they should label this House Bill five eighty-one, the unknown, the great unknown.
And like I said, they're talking.
A lot of it every day.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
And if you go back and look, um, if we did have this extra one cent sales tax, it's only gonna take off about two and a half mils, I think, on the total tax bill. Is that right? Um, so if you look at it, you've got the school board mileage, then you've got the board of commissioners mileage. And just the amount of money that's gotta be made up, even with it, the mileage rate increases are gonna significantly outnumber.
Yeah, the, the number's up here.
This is crazy.
Right here, this is how much you lose. This isn't school board in Canada yet. Uh, last first year, we'd lose two point, almost two point eight billion dollars of revenue between the both. And I figured out in twenty-seven percent, we would lose seven hundred and fifty thousand just on the first go.
And honestly, I looked at this thing, I had conversations with Shane. I wanted to find a way that we could stay in this thing. I mean, I really looked at, but uh, from the numbers that we see now, I, I, I just don't see a way that we can stay in this.
And the problem we have is a one and done. Whatever decision we make, we're stuck with unless they make some legislative changes. So.
Alright. Any one got any questions about House Bill five eighty-one?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate each and every one of you guys that I have served with for having the fortitude, and Terrell too, for having the fortitude to look into this and ask questions instead of just going with the status quo. Um, I know especially, uh, I'm not saying me, I'm saying you guys. Uh, especially our leadership and um, Terrell in particular, spent a lot of times asking questions, asking difficult questions and spent a lot of time researching and then reporting back to us. And um, I appreciate that, cause that, that tells me that you guys are investing this and, and care. Um, not about your, personally, how, what people are gonna say about how we vote on this, but actually care about the county and the well-being of the county and its financial situation. So uh, that means a lot. Appreciate the opportunity to serve with you guys.
Alright, thank you. Uh, anyone have any questions about House Bill five eighty-one? And like um, Terrell said, we're on a timeline. We gotta have a letter to the state by March the first twenty, twenty-five. And I'd like to have it done February the twentieth or twenty-fifth, whatever that day, that last hearing day is. And make sure we get a receipt on that because like Commissioner Dorsey said, if we don't get that there in time, we're in it. There's no action required to stay in it. But to opt out, you better have that paperwork there and on time, so uh. Saturday.
So you would technically be in Friday?
Right.
Well, I said.
They didn't do that on purpose at all. That's just coincidence that that fell on Saturday.
Alright, so I, I'm gonna uh put in a form of a motion that after reading and studying and, and like you said, guys, this is not a light decision. This is a big decision and, and we don't take it lightly, but uh, I'll put it in a form of motion that we're gonna opt out of House Bill five eighty-one.
I'll second.
Any discussion, any questions? And we wanna be as transparent about this as we can be. And like I said, Shane will be here next Tuesday and he'll answer any questions to why we're doing what we're doing.
Excuse me. We've, we've talked to other governments, um, talked to state legislatures. Uh, it, it's just, the whole thing is just a mess.
We understand, we understand the process now. I mean, it, it's uh, you know, it's pretty, not to mention the more work that it's gonna have to cause our government offices, so. But I made a motion and Commissioner Dorsey seconded it. Uh, any questions or questions? If not, we'll call.
Do you wanna include the scheduled hearing dates?
The whatever, the every date you've got in here in this timeline, the hearing dates and all is, uh, is what I'm proposing.
Just so the public can know, the initial, we'll have an initial twenty-first meeting, disinformation. Uh, the first public hearing will be at the January twenty-eighth meeting, six o'clock here before the regular meeting. Uh, the next meeting will be February the eleventh here uh at six o'clock. And again, on February twenty-fifth, that's when the actual vote will take place to sign the resolution.
Now, one of those meetings has to be during the daytime. One of those public hearings has to be.
They all at six o'clock, is that what you?
Okay. I thought we had to have one in the morning.
Well, I think so. Right there, I mean, right there's instructions required.
You can do it at lunchtime, be done with it and that way.
That'd be fine. We'll move one of those to lunchtime. I'll show you what y'all want to do.
Why don't we do the last one instead of waiting till that last week in February? Why don't we move that up a week?
Well, depending on my, and that's, another thing that's different about this than the regular stuff. If we're gonna just raise taxes, we could advertise at one time and have all the meetings. This, you gotta advertise it individually every time a week before you have this meeting. So it's gotta be advertised a paper three times.
Oh, okay. Could, could that announcement?
I want that hard.
A thousand words.
Could that announcement have in it two dates?
You're saying you have to have press release each week?
Each meeting, each meeting.
Okay. You could put two dates in that meeting, in that advertisement, right?
Jim, that's a legal question.
Couldn't you just run the same ad three times?
Listen, I wouldn't wanna take any chances. I'd try to follow this stuff if I could.
Uh, yeah, just keep it every week for three weeks.
Yeah, I'll change one of them to a twelve o'clock meeting.
Okay. Somebody will catch it.
Alright, we've got a motion to second it. We'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Alright, we'll move on down to uh clerk of court request for additional court composition juvenile court.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I've included clerk of courts uh letter and reasoning he sent to us about. But basically, there's, there's more requirements coming down for the clerk of court to cover juvenile trials over the House of Attorney physically present in there. So Frankie's requesting a part-time slot be put in for that uh twenty hour week, whatever, whatever part-time is.
The, the part-time is twenty hours, not twenty-four hours?
Uh.
He said twenty to twenty-four hours.
Twenty, twenty, it's part-time. Maybe half, be one hundred and forty hours a year, whatever it comes up to.
Well, I think this is another effect of growth in our community that, you know, court cases have.
Well, it's not only our community, it's district-wide. It's, it's not, I mean, it's us and everybody else too.
His letters got in here, Senate Bill four oh one.
Yeah, I mean, that required.
Something by the state. I might make sure we're previous request.
Yes, another state requirement.
Exactly.
Imagine that.
You got a big brother helping us out?
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Tease, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion or questions? If not, we'll call for.
We need to limit it, try to do twenty-four hours a week, cause we get to thirty, you gotta provide the benefits.
That's fair, yes, of course. But he has specifically for part-time, which in my mind, that's a thousand forty hours a year.
Right. Just, just so we're all clear.
Alright. We'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Alright, we'll move on down to uh letter to G-DOT requesting uh parallel temporary bypass bridge with uh replacement. Mr. Dorsey, did you ask for this?
I did.
Okay.
I know it's not my district, so, but um, the last thing we wanna do is have another situation where we got a bridge closed and we got roads destroyed. I mean, Memorial Road, we've recently resurfaced. That will be part of the detour, I feel sure. Um, Beacon Light Road's in pretty bad shape um now in places and uh.
Red King is too.
All these roads are gonna be hit by this truck traffic. You gotta think about when interstate shut down, which seems to happen once every month. All this traffic comes through and some of these bridges are not gonna be able to withstand some of the trucks that's gonna be going across them, cause they're gonna be using GPS and they're not gonna be following detour signs. And uh, I just think we need to start getting vocal now. Um, and not have a repeat of what we went through on, on Royston Highway and start writing letters to Russell McMurray and Alan Powell and Lee Anderson, our state representative, state senator, and I think copy Brian Kemp on it and we'll, we'll start ringing his phone too.
I agree with you a hundred percent. They beat my roads to death with Coatesberry Highway Bridges. They done when they done them too. Yeah, this is gonna be a tough one too.
Yeah. And it's also gonna affect emergency services response time, cause there's no way around it. There's no, no shortcut.
I'll make a motion, just to start sending letters to authorities.
Second.
Second.
Did you say?
I seconded his motion just now.
No, you can say. You got a vote for it. I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you make the motion.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, uh, second by Commissioner Bennett.
And, and let's also include the core of engineers on this as well, cause they may be a player in this thing.
Alright, any discussion, questions? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Uh, we'll move on to uh. Fire Department.
Uh, as, as I put in there, they found a tanker that they were wanting permission to, to buy if he checks out. Um, I got, I said, I put the picture in the packet. I got it up here too.
What model is it?
It's a nineteen ninety-five. This truck does have, it does have a manual transmission. It's five-speed manual transmission. Haven't actually physically put eyes on it, but in the statement, I told Terrell, if you guys approve out with the decision of going, us going to see it, look over the whole truck, make sure it's a good truck. It's twenty-five hundred gallon tank. It has a triple dump chute on the back and that basically increased our water supply with one truck instead of having to drive two. This truck, we're looking to put in this truck down to Station Six. We have a front mount truck, front mount pump truck down there that's not being used. It's basically due to breaks, they're on hydraulic brakes. It's not considered an emergency vehicle anymore. The tanker at Station Six, we removed to Station Ten that does not have a tanker at this time. And the reason to put the twenty-five hundred at Station Six, it covers Station Ten and Station Seven. That'll increase our water supply on the south end of the county. And for the, the pricing on that, it's seventy-five thousand on this particular truck. Like I said, with us going and looking at it first before we actually purchase the vehicle.
Where's it at?
It's in uh, West of Chapel, North Carolina.
This truck you got, what you said is not considered an emergency truck anymore. Why don't we keep it, why don't we sell it?
We just keep it because of ISO, keep our water.
Well, I saw revenue, you wouldn't have seen it trucks. Well, that's a question.
And we uh, and we're, we don't rest because of the brakes.
And that one's manual brakes, but they were sticked with.
Hydraulic, they're not air.
Hydraulic, you can't, you can't find any parts.
I just wondered why I was keeping, and you answered my question, it's about our ratings.
That's what we'll do. Once we get another truck, like it's twenty-five hundred gallons, that will be kept out of service.
Captain's good with this? Captain's good with this?
Yes, the captain's good. We expressed hope to all the captains and had their blessings on this uh station.
This money's coming out of you floss funds?
So a couple of questions, looking at the back, there's gonna have to be some modifications done, right? Doesn't have this, the dump chute.
It's got, it's got three of them on the back of it. One comes out the back right there.
I'm talking about the one, like, what you putting on the bigger tankers, the swinging ones.
That actually is electric, electric extension. It'll come another two and a half feet behind it. The black box that you see on right behind the wheels, that's another electric extension. Then there's another one just like it on the passenger side. So this, this does away with the swivel. You have three chutes coming out instead of having a swivel on the back. And it's all, all controlled by that right there inside the cabin. Where we're driving truck and everybody's just having a truck.
I make a motion, we allow them to go and look at it and if it's what you think it is, then to go ahead and purchase it.
Let's, let's make an offer lower to start with, try to get it cheaper.
We'll go look at it and see what you think it's worth.
Offer sixty-five and then if you have to.
Uh, I made a motion second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote.
Yeah, don't wear no nice clothes. Make sure they think we're broke.
We do that. Just remember, you can always go up on your offer. You can't go down. I'm steely, if you can tell.
Alright, thank you.
Find out who they like for a ball team, wear one of the hats, like you go.
There you go. We just had one on our packet.
I'm just saying the one. Well, you're here, I mean, you can at least talk about it.
Oh, it's two trucks?
Well, if you know about it, just go. Yeah, y'all don't worry. I've been making motions already made.
We'll discuss that one next one at another meeting, I guess.
Is it the same place? You're gonna look at two?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Alright, thank you.
So while we're talking about this, when are we gonna get ISO back in here?
Uh, when is your ISO coming back? Generally, their schedule will be in twenty-second.
We, we, cause we were told we had to wait two years after the last audit that changed us from a four to a five.
And we're. She called it back four. Yeah.
Does the extra water line help any?
If the water lines.
So should we wait until the water lines ran and recreek?
That would, that would, that would be, and if we can get the water lines to recreek, that might be an issue there. Also, there have been some things done for the water department to increase water flow in the system we have now. That is another small thing.
Well, what, what we need to do is look and see when we're confident we can do it, we need to get it done.
Do y'all have any information on the fire hydrants out there? Have we got them all up and running yet?
They're all on GPS, operation.
No, I, all of them are probably on the line.
We have had some that's down, that's the reason I'm saying.
On the U, on the U line, we're not up yet, but that's a little busted, so we're back to running online. But yeah, we got, we do keep up the work, working on nothing.
Yeah, we get called every time we go online, we go out and check flood testing there, but it's a test for next.
Well, we had some that got hit by cars and different things. They was having trouble getting them and having, getting them installed. All that's been corrected. Yeah, I had one Liberty Hill Road that was there.
I hadn't even noticed about it now.
I think they got to one on Liberty Hill Road.
They have a list of all hydrants that were damaged. They have a list of, we don't have any control over them fixing since one.
I just assume y'all stay in touch with that kind of stuff, cause you, you, you gotta know which one's working and not when you go to a fire.
They have a list of all hydrants that are damaged. You know, they're fixing them, I guess, we don't have any control on.
So you keep up with the ones that's not working, okay?
Alright, thank you. Oh, now we come to the time of public comment. Do we have anyone here that would like to address the board as far as public comment, as far as uh, a county issue? Uh, yes, ma'am, you can come on forward. Uh, this is not an opportunity for take jabs at any of the commissioners or anything like that, but if you got a, a county issue, we'd like to listen to you.
I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I've enjoyed watching you all um work tonight and you have certainly represented me as a citizen of the county. Make sure that you're making, making good um decisions on, on our behalf. Thank you very much. I am Connie Kirk and I'm a volunteer on the Board of Directors of the Northeast Georgia Council on Domestic Violence. Uh, I'm also the chairperson for the Polar Bear Plunge um and Winter Festival this year. With me tonight is Barbie Stowe, who is our Director of Development and Communications on the staff at, at our organization. Uh, I'm here representing the board, the staff and the six hundred and fifty victims that we represent annually, that we serve annually. Uh, first, before I go anywhere, I wanna thank you all for um, for the ongoing support that you have provided for our organization and for the mission that we have in vending, in prevention, intervention and education for uh victims of domestic, of domestic violence. Uh, secondly, I'd like to say hats off to the fantastic law enforcement people that um, who are our first responders. They go and um, and, and they are compassionate, they are fair and they know to who they should, they know who they should call. fair, and they know to whom they should, they know who they should call, and, um, and they call, they know our emergency number, they know our, um, that we are three sixty-five, twenty-four seven, uh, crisis number, and they know that they can take the victims to a safe place, um, when they are in, in the trauma that, that they are facing, um, with their children and even their pets. So, I know you all, if anybody understands that, um, that we, um, are funded through government grants, mostly, and they, um, they require matching funds. In our case, we receive seventy-two percent of our revenue from government grants, and we match twenty-eight percent, so therefore, our fundraising is extremely important. So, the, we have two main fundraising events, our sources, and that is the Polar Bear Plunge and Winter Festival, and the resale store at South Forest Station. This is our twenty-ninth annual, um, Polar Bear Plunge, and it's scheduled for March the first at the Gum Branch Mega Ranch, at Gum Branch Mega Ranch, how do you put my teeth in? Um, and, um, last March, we had, was the first time we used that facility, and it was perfect, it was fabulous, and, uh, so, the week after the event was over, we scheduled this year's event at the same place, and last Thursday, we happened to hear that Hurricane Helen had done a number on that facility out there, and that there was not a, a dock to jump off of, and, um, and so, even during Snowmageddon last week, when nobody was in their office or anything, we sprung into action, and, um, and we validated that this was indeed true, and we began to search for a solution, and we have a request for you tonight. We contacted our solution, I will tell you about, we contacted Jason Tritz, who is the owner of Southern Marine Enterprises, that's, this, this is his brochure, and he, uh, is, is the owner of that, and he has offered to provide a temporary, um, dock there, so that we can have our event there, and, um, and so, we then contacted the Corps of Engineers, the Corps of Engineers has said, yes, they would allow that temporary dock, but first we had to have approval from the Board of Commissioners, that's why I'm here, and so what, um, we would like to ask you is to, uh, approve the installation of the temporary dock, pending the details of, of the drawings from Mr. Tritz, and send it as soon as possible to Mr. Crabtree, uh, at the Corps, and, and so that we can get the construction and installation done in time for the event. We, uh, Mr. Tritz has agreed to, um, do this as a gift in exchange for a sponsorship, and we're just going to promote his business, and, uh, and so that is, that's our plan. Do you all have any questions for me?
So, what you're asking from us is just permission to allow this man to put this temporary dock at the Gum Branch location.
I think we'd have to write a letter requesting it from the Corps.
Right, well, but the Corps has verbally agreed to us that they would.
As long as we agree.
As long as we do, we'll have, we'll have to initiate.
How far are we replacing this?
It wouldn't be here by March anyway.
See if we make a, a better solution, if we.
Yes, you called Barbie.
Well, I called Barbie today too, because I heard, heard the advertising, I wanted to make sure y'all knew that, that the dock was gone.
Yes, thank you, Corps, we, we didn't know that until, uh, someone told us last Thursday, just a friend that said, I think there's construction going on that, so, um, it's not gonna be your hundred thousand dollar dock. Not gonna be a what?
No, it's temporary.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Since this is their event, and the dock is, uh, temporary and done, there wouldn't be any liability for us, since they've already. Yeah. That's what I'm saying, since they've already got that approved from us, to have that event, then work on it, so, all they would need is approval.
But we also get special event, um, coverage.
Right, right.
Maybe you might know something about that.
Well, you think he's an insurance man? I make a motion, we go ahead and write a letter to the Corps to initiate the, uh, progress of being able to put a temporary dock at the Mega Ranch.
Give me a second.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, motion second by Commissioner Brown, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this five oh vote.
Thank you so much.
Can we enter someone from the Board of Commissioners to?
Frankie's been, to get into that thing.
Frankie's been itching to jump in that water for us, and represent us, because.
He used to jump in air, but.
We actually just voted on that tonight, too.
I think that that would be a, a wonderful thing to see all of you out there jumping, and, um, and if, hey, it's okay, because we have an alternative, if you are, are chill, cold water averse, you can get a silly dance group together and dance for good prizes, so, um, we have, we have something for everyone.
I think you've given us something to work towards.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
As the board.
Marshall's are good, he can yell real good.
Yeah, he was singing in here a little while ago.
Let's move on.
You'll hit your hammer up there.
Thank you for all you do, thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, if not, we do have, uh, executive session for, uh, litigation and personnel, and, uh, Sheriff Carroll has asked, uh, that they be included in executive session for personnel, so, uh, everybody makes a motion, if you would include that in your motion.
You just made it, didn't you, I'll give you a second.
And, and Chief Deputy, um.
Second.
All right, got a motion second, any discussion? Not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this five oh vote, all right, thank you, people, for being here.